Like fourteen to two or something.
Right, stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Dryer, call the roll.
Absolutely, Mayor Carney.
Here.
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 Mr. Harriman here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Sins.
Here.
Mr. Harriman.
Here.
If there are no further additions or to this evening's council meeting agenda, the agenda will stand as provided. And if there are motion to approve council regular meeting minutes from July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five?
Motion. Meeting minutes.
Mr. Dillard.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah.
Mr. Harriman.
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah.
Mr. Sins.
Okay.
Mr. Harriman.
Stay.
Are approved. We have one member who has signed in to speak, for Eric Medici, if you'd like to come forward. Oh, yes, yes, we can, yes, we. Go around, yeah.
Don't start that timer just yet.
No, yes.
That was quick, man.
Yeah. This evening, I have a pledge of swearing in our U.S. police officer. And I would like to consider courting Major Tufa forward. And actually, yes. I should just.
Now we're trying to rush it. But anyhow, this is Corey Mayers, he comes from Fort Quentin, where he had four staff.
County Sheriff's Office for five, almost five years.
So we're lucky to have him with his experience. He passed, and everything successfully, of course, that's why he's here tonight. I think he's going to be a great fit. He's coming down, what, one or two right overalls already. It seems like the community so far. So anyhow, I just would like to walk him into our team, and then also to the, like, city.
So Mr. Sherratt, here, right in. So you raise your right hand, and you after me. And I, Corey Mayers, dissolve my swear, or affirm that I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, which will constitute the most important. The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio. And the laws that warrant and others of any degree more. And to that, my ability to support, as far as the duty of conduct, is so. Congratulations.
Get the fake one.
Congratulations. Thank you. You want to get pictures, yeah, we'll get pictures real quick, and then we'll be back in, so we'll better be on hold.
I took the waiver.
Yes, Aaron is out there taking photos, though.
I know a guy.
Okay. We are back with all of our council members, so now we'll call Mr. Eric Medici. For a second.
Well, thanks for letting me speak. Here we go. I think the village needs to create some guidance for events staff and businesses. Because, well, during any events that close the streets. As a landlord, I cannot, I can't tell tenants they must close. If for some reason they must, then they need to be compensated somehow. Next year, will the clock tower remain open during Rock the Clock? Can they sell food? There are obviously alcohol issues, unless you guys get a door up in place. I can assure you that our bank building, I can actually get open by then, will not close without a fight. So the village really needs to work out some details with event planners. If a business must close, then who's going to reimburse the tenants for that percentage of their monthly rent and lost income? And with the clock tower, the servers make most of their money on Saturday nights. So it would be just badly unfair to tell them they can't be open on a Saturday night. For me, Rock the Clock is the worst day of the year, every year. I have never actually been able to watch the show because I'm so busy preventing damage behind the buildings. I say this every year. There's not enough security staff in the needed places. I watched an older woman carrying a wooden sign for her front porch that was not allowed food to drop off the sign to the business prior to the event. Obviously, this is not someone trying to sneak into a venue carrying a large wooden sign. I was never contacted by Tim or his staff regarding the details of fence locations, our tenants, or security. Just silence. He has my cell phone number. Everyone knows how to get ahold of me, I'm on site seven days a week. All impacted people and businesses should have some input. This year, I was blocked in by a security van parked behind me on my private property, so I was unable to go to lunch. He refused to move because his boss told him to park there. An argument ensued, and he verbally attacked my character, used profanity, and nobody has the right to do that to me on my own property. So I assure you that I returned the favor. Took me an hour to get my truck out to go to lunch. I was so upset that by the end, I asked multiple times for someone to call the police. Dale and I ended up having a shouting match, all due to Tim's lack of communication with impacted businesses prior to the event. Now, I like Dale.
Thank you, Mr. Medici.
This is inexcusable.
But this is at your, thank you.
Inexcusable.
Moving into our reports, I was not here at the previous meeting, but want to thank our staff members for a wonderful Fourth of July festivities. Everything from the parade to the fireworks was really well done, and I know it takes, it truly takes a village to put that event on, and so want to thank everyone for providing an outstanding event and holiday for our residents. Also, want to thank our, our staff members down to support us, support Plain City, myself and the dignitary hog show at the Madison County Fair. That was kind of, I found out prior that they were having that, and when they asked me to be a part of it, I said, definitely. I show pigs, preach. And so along with Congressman Carey, Senator Reynolds, and the Madison County Commissioners, and Mayor Pat Klosser, I participated in the event and just, it was really nice to, for Plain City, for each members to see support down there, so thank you. Friday, I attended the ER Auto Care Regrand opening that they had, and trying to put their, back out there for all their different services with Union County Chamber. I intended the Madison, or the, excuse me, the Miami Valley Steam Thrushers on Sunday, and had a great time at the event. Even though Sundays are slower day, they said they had a great show, and a lot of people enjoyed the tractor parade through town. Also, attended Rock the Clock, and thought that was a great event with lots of added security this year, and just want to thank, I know a lot of people went and saw, went to the event, and just, it was good to see the residents out there. With that, I will move it on to Ms. Lepton, our village administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. We are currently hiring for a facilities technician, we're beginning interviews for that position tomorrow. Hopefully, we get someone on the job pretty soon. Like you said, Rock the Clock and Steam Thrushers are both over now, we will have after-event meetings, thanks to police and fire, public works, for all their time that they put into those events. Lastly, we have a cop plan open house on August eighteenth. It was originally scheduled August nineteenth, but we just moved it back today to, so we don't conflict with some school meetings. Meeting will be in this room at five o'clock, I believe. It's open to everyone who wants to attend, and after that, we'll have some stakeholder meetings with some targeted groups. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lepton. Sonnet, our finance director.
Thank you, Mayor. As Ms. Lepton mentioned, that the facilities technician will also enter, getting ready to start interviews for the financial analyst position. We've got several good applicants for that, so we'll give these, hire them next few weeks here.
That's fantastic, thank you, Ms. Sonnet. Chief McKee.
Just a quick update on the hiring process that, again, Corey was just sworn in. He's actually going to probably be the replacement for Officer Rubio, good luck in November, so it's taken us that long to hire someone to replace him. We're continuing with the hiring, the interview process, we've interviewed a few candidates. They're probably going to be cadets, most likely, will probably send.
Academy starts October first, so we're kind of in a crunch to get somebody here, and all the stuff they have to prepare before they go into their. Into the academy. And also, I just would like to thank all my guys, the public works guy, they put in a lot of hours in July. Especially Steam Thresher, it was a twenty-four hour, you know, security, basically, for, for. My officers out there, so they were working eight hours here, and they went out there and working, you know, hours after hours out there at the Steam Thresher. Also, Rock the Clock, Fourth of July. We have one more event, just a reminder for the National Night Out, which is on next Tuesday, here at the Police Department, so that's going to be another busy night. And again, just want to thank all them, especially Public Works and the Fire Department for everything that they got to do. And I think that's all I have, just time.
Chief.
So, so Chief, so how many open positions do we have now? Just the one. Just the one. Just the one. And we do have a spot at the, we have a spot, we get a camp date.
As long as we get an interview for October for tourists, let's find somebody.
And then when, and?
Bailey should be graduating locally in October. And she'll be ready probably sometime next year to be on the run. She's supposed to go to our train.
Okay.
We'll get there.
Sounds great.
We're getting there.
Mr. Terry, council president.
We already have it in August, right? Our session will be six. I don't know what the agenda yet, we'll have to look through that, but other than that, I want to form council president.
Thanks.
I'll do, uh.
Oh, yes.
You want. Uh, so, yeah, meeting for Parks and Rec is on the twelfth, well, last meeting, and I also believe at the council meeting, you got to do some of the financials for the campground and the pool. Yeah, they're, guessing there'll be more of that conversation, and would be want to potentially evaluate additional changes going next year. I think usually we set campground rates during budget season handling, so for the following year. So if we're going to make any changes, and it looks like the changes that we have made did kind of what we wanted them to do, which, based on my review of the financials and everything, so there was a big sentiment against that from the council. We're probably still looking at continuing process of increasing revenue with the campground through, like, higher rates, and potentially even, I'm open for exactly Parks and Rec, and continue to shorten the term from six months down to three months, because I don't think, we saw a big drop off there going from here to six months, so.
Should we put that on our August discussion?
You know, I think it would be fair to, Ms. Ranger and the Parks, maybe if we had conversations, it's maybe better for September.
Okay.
You know, just get what Parks and Rec have a conversation about first, and see where their heads are at and everything like that.
Okay.
With that.
So September, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anything on tree commission?
I have never, I've never been to one.
You're kind of the crossover.
I'm not, okay. Everyone always asks me about tree commission, I don't know, I, I don't know what it is.
It's on here, so that's why I just, you know.
Maybe we could.
Loop it in.
You have an update, so please.
Uh, I'm sure meeting, confirm there will be another meeting, and Dan can tell you about it, but maybe we don't need to include that as a date going forward.
Oh, yes.
We will move that.
Okay, thank you, Terry, Mr. Lafayette, our law director.
Just, uh, normal day-to-day operations, nothing special to report.
Economic Development Committee, Ferguson.
Thank you, Mayor, we, our July meeting was canceled, so the next meeting date I have is September sixteenth at eleven. Thank you.
And BZA, Mr. Harriman.
We've had July ninth, had two references, one just for accessory structure, one for a fence on a court, which is our usual theme for BZA lately. I haven't heard anything if there's anything for August, I know they thought there might be, but usually Collins says that, so I've seen anything up, so I'm going to kind of look if you've heard it.
I'm not sure yet.
So if we do have one, it would be August thirteenth.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harriman. And planning, then, I was unable to attend that meeting due to being out of town. But the final development plan for a spot went through with just a few minor input. And I talked to Mr. Hutchinson to have him send me an update, and then I believe that they went back through, and one of the things that I know that is, will be going back through, that council will have to decide, is fee schedule for our mobile letters. So that is something that, you know, want to be thinking about, like, what is, what is our purpose of the mobile letter permit? What seems like a fair fee to their, so just want to put that on everybody's thought process as we're going into budget season as well, because that will come to us to decide. So our next meeting is August twentieth at five thirty. And Personnel and Finance, CIP, Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, we just had a meeting on the twenty-fourth. We talked about the, kind of the mid-year financial update, the budget stuff, that is on the second reading tonight, we kind of did that a little bit backwards, but we had our last meeting and had good discussions around that, just thinking about, kind of what capital projects want, from requests from the media, want capital projects for next year, so, good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, and Fire Board, Mr. Sins.
Our next meeting is the first Thursday in August, and officially, Mr. Terry's played on the, you're my backup.
Oh, nice. And that's a real, that's my back. Tree commission.
So it'll be August seventh, then?
No, I'm, I don't need.
Oh, no, sorry.
I just want to let you know that those, that happened this week, so.
Oh, 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 if you can, okay.
If I.
You cannot.
No back.
Apparently.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sins.
Thank you.
Plain City Area Development Corporation, Mr. Udaly.
July eleventh, or July ninth, we, our meeting was canceled, our next one is September tenth at eight thirty here. We also, we had, I also sit on the CICs for Madison Union, you knew we haven't met in a while, Madison County, we met last month. We had an emergency meeting up here at the Dare Dutchman, instead of down in Madison County, so they're trying to move some of those. They also passed, I guess, we can now have mobile or Zoom meetings that we can actually be in, and that's how they're going to, some of our meetings are going to be doing that, so.
Thank you for that update. PCBA, Union County Chamber.
Meeting, the next meeting should be on the seventh.
Was, was.
That's why.
Yes, I hear you, here it's been presented.
Not by myself. I had help.
But you were the star.
ER Auto Care, and she said she, you guys were. Words of wisdom. And our semi-quintcentennial, oh, our Madison County next chamber board meeting is next Tuesday at noon. I'm not sure if I'm able to make that meeting, so if anybody is open and would like to go down to London and attend the Madison County Chamber meeting, that would be great. They just announced their Bonanza fundraiser for October, I believe, October seventeenth? Sixteenth, I believe. And so I know people, a lot of people sent companies, and it's good networking, so if anybody wants to attend, more information will be coming out about that. We do have a grand opening next Wednesday, August sixth, at Newgrounds Coffee at one P.M. I forgot to cover that earlier in my report, so I will add it in on the Chamber of Commerce side. And then we are going to get a date for our next semi-quintcentennial event planning meeting this evening, so we will have more to report on that later.
Just, uh, as a point of reference, as a reminder, we are now back, there are no more canceled meetings, right? We're back for the rest of, going back into August and everything, everything's on the schedule, so, kind of had our summer.
Yes.
We'll just have to, as it gets closer, look at November, December, if anything, it's kind of crazy.
Not too worried about December yet.
No, but it's going to be here fast. If any, if it's like July. Okay, moving out of reports into discussion items, we have a public hearing scheduled for ZC dash twenty-five dash three and ZC dash twenty-five dash thirteen.
And that's just the notification that goes.
Yes, so pursuant to the provisions of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-five, the conference ordinances for any, the conference documents chapter that regulates how we schedule public hearings, on council schedules public hearings, was revised in order to make it a more streamlined and efficient process. So with the provisions of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-five, whenever a public hearing occurs, there are no meetings to be a motion made by council that council doesn't need to just schedule a public hearing, so we'll have a little bit of forward staff, and just be able to pick the date that is pursuant to the conference ordinances, so we have to have the thirty days and twenty days, and then we communicate that, maybe to do at the next council meeting for the conference ordinances, so, again, moving forward, this will be what it looks like, there's a staff on the packet as well, but there are no meetings to be a motion for the actual public hearing, so it makes it a little more easy. With that in mind, to public hearings that have been scheduled for September, the ZC twenty-five dash three is for the provisions to Chapter eleven ninety-nine, which is SANS, this is the conference of evidence that staff has been working on for a while, general data SANS code. ZC dash twenty-five dash thirteen is for Chapter eleven ninety-four, which is level vendors, that has some minor revisions based on resident and staff and council confidence feedback and all good stuff, maybe a public hearing, number eight, which is already been housed and all good stuff as well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dryer, and trash and recycling request for proposals.
Thank you, our contract with local waste is expiring at the end of this year, it was a three-year contract with the option to extend for a couple of years. We don't have an option to extend any further, so I just wanted to make you aware, I'm finishing up the RFP, and I'll have legal counsel review it, then that'll be out for a few weeks and evaluated this fall. So we'll see what types of responses we get.
Thank you, Ms. Lepton. And we have a motion to approve PZ dash twenty-five dash three, final plat for Maron Reserve SubArea B, Phase Two.
Motion to approve PZ dash twenty-five dash three, second.
Yes.
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 PZ dash twenty-five dash three is approved. Moving into unfinished business, second reading ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two twenty-five, amending ordinance fourteen dash two zero zero seven through the amendment of the boundaries of the Plain City Community Reinvestment Area, number two, known as the U.S. Forty-two Business Park.
Motion to approve dash twenty-five, second.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Mr. Dillard.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two twenty-five is approved. Second reading ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two twenty-five, authorizing all actions necessary to effect an opt-out electric service aggregation program pursuant to Ohio Rights Code, section forty-nine, four nine two eight point two zero, directing the County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors and declaring an emergency.
Just for clarification, the emergency is so we have the proper timing to get it to the fourth elections, right? Motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two twenty-five and declare an emergency.
Second.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Dillard.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two twenty-five is approved by emergency. Second reading ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-two twenty-five, authorizing all actions necessary to effect an opt-out natural gas aggregation program pursuant to Ohio Rights Code, section four nine two nine point two six, directing the County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors and declaring an emergency.
Approve ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-two twenty-five and declare an emergency. Second.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Dillard.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-two twenty-five is approved by emergency. Second reading ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-two twenty-five, approving a supplemental appropriation of funds amendments to the Village of Plain City, two thousand twenty-five budget.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-two twenty-five, second.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Mr. Dillard.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-five, twenty-two twenty-five is approved. Second reading Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-two twenty-five, amending the pastime park campground rules policy.
Next twenty-two twenty-five? I have a, I guess, we have some clarification, you know, is there any? I have a, I guess, we have some clarification, you know, was there any follow-up?
Yes, I made these clarifications, so they're just slightly, mostly I made the clarification thing like as, or as allowed by the Director of Parks and Rec. And then I added in the language about the grills, I said, or other small.
Small cooking appliances.
Yeah.
All right. And generator was if the power goes out, but not during quiet hours.
Yeah, not during non-quiet hours, yeah.
Right.
So those weren't large changes, so I, we can continue with the fact already.
Okay, that's why I want to clearly, our big change that has to go through.
Yeah.
Second.
Mr. Sence.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Diller.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Harrow.
Yes.
Resolution 39-2025 is approved. And that concludes our public portion of our meeting this evening. We are about to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Rights Code, Section 121.22G2, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes as our motion to enter executive session.
Motion to enter executive session.
Second. Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrow.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sence.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes. And Ms. Lepton, who would you like to?
Um, Ms. Sonnet, Chief McKee, Mr. Dryer. Randy, can you go?
Don't anyone bother me.
He turned, he did, he turned that off.
He didn't.
Yeah, he did not, yeah.